Oh.
I want to meet up against, um, yeah. I want to meet up against, I want.
I was in this town, that's class. It's been a while ago.
I know I didn't want to listen yet.
Our health, she was just scared by it.
Damn. You must have played my role on the local board.
The technology is always getting in the way.
Yeah. Which one outweighs the other? What are some of the consequences?
Couple things I think, uh, the wind. Doing better than.
Uh, yeah.
Something time.
Always see enough.
Kill.
By you know. I would say Kansas City is about to put mandates on that.
Mm-hmm.
Except I really like that.
And, uh.
So can they, uh, there's.
Is this your bathroom?
Here.
Here, Mr. Bridges, here. Open, here, Mr. Schneider, here, Mr. Ball, here. Were those events taken off the recording? The recording did not take, I took them off of staff's notes, okay. Okay. I didn't, I didn't see any discrepancy, I just. It was a thorough list, but I'd see.
Right.
Yeah, our, we had an audio problem with the last meeting. Audio problem. Is that definitely all of it? Yes.
Improvement, that's right. And.
No.
This is definitely improvement, that's right. One second. One second. Improvement seconded, approved of it. Well, favorably, clearly, right hand. So at the same time, which passes, all the limits were brought to new business. Tag certification and having unity.
This is a staff initiated request for clarification on one that was recently approved through your moratorium on solar and other renewable energy sources. Data collection and resource exploration. Uh, county has received inquiries from firms involved in resource exploration of hydrogen and other federal elements in surrounding counties. Planning commission did recommend people of either biological powers to be installed between two thousand sixteen and two thousand fifteen for the purpose of collecting these data. Long, long before we got any kind of resolution, uh, to address any alternative energies in our regulations. So, uh, the historic activity in the right of place where this would be taking place. That has been the jurisdiction of the road and bridge department. Moratorium states only the planning commission shall not misuse any type of legal. For the installation of any solar or other alternative energy system. Other than those currently approved for consideration under article twenty-one. It does not mention anything regarding accessory type uses such as exploration, data collecting. So this is just basically to find out if, uh, if that. Moratorium, if this is the, includes, uh, exploration for that two years or. Will we allow that exploration again? This is unlike the net towers, the net towers were on private land. This is going to be exploration in the right of way. And I just wanted a clarification on whether or not, uh, that moratorium would include exploration of data collecting. Staff's opinion is probably that, uh, since there's already been a precedent set for the net towers, I just wanted to get a clarification.
Mister Chairman.
Yes.
I, I think I made the motion of moratorium, is that right?
Yep.
Is, is it okay if I start?
Sure.
I guess in, in, in thinking back and making that, uh, moratorium. Motion, I was not thinking of testing. We, we, we already set the standards with the met. Uh. But I do have a question, i- if, if, if the. Road and Bridge Department give permission for the right of way, will they still have to apply for a CUP through this organization? So we, we don't have any jurisdiction, this body doesn't have any jurisdiction over the right of way, only on five o'clock. So, so I, I guess, from the first made of motion. I, I was not thinking yet to include exploration.
It's got a nice attitude, you on that.
Yes, I think you said that. That's just me.
I think I was wanting to switch from five to two instead of just putting it all together. I mean, now everything changes, I thought maybe two years would be. You know, see what happens in a couple of years, and I think we are both on the same dream, I didn't think of exploratory.
But I mean, is there any consensus?
So in the fact that we wouldn't explore, like. Writing a regulation for that, or, okay.
Cause that's, that's already addressed, other road bridge, right, they've already got their own set of regulations, I don't mind. Really what this, what brought this up was last week, the county commission had a question about it. And they wanted to find out if the moratorium included that, so this is a staff initiated based on what the table was left.
My, my intent, I guess, was, I did not have that in mind. That was my intention of the motion.
I'll pass that on to, uh, county commissioners. Thank you gentlemen, ladies.
Can the gallery ask questions on this?
Uh, at this time, the, the public cannot ask questions at this point because this is just a clarification.
Okay.
And, and.
Would you at least be able to get a sheet that you guys have that states what the deal is?
Oh, yeah, I mean, we can provide, we talked about the agenda or, or something like this, okay. I can teach you one of those.
Yes, please.
Okay. Yeah, it'll be a matter though. Um. With that, do you want to go on to item?
Yeah, we are item CUP twenty-four dash zero five, uh, consideration of the conditional use permit. Allow one person to disturb that has a therapy animal on a parcel of land less than three acres as required under article twenty-one. This property is called the address as point two sixty Fair Road and being requested by Marcia and Nicole.
And, uh, this is basically, uh, a property that is, um, it's surrounded, uh, by an ag forty zoning. You have, uh, three slots that are residential that are around it with one that's agricultural, that's the more. The applicant is requesting approval of the keeping of a single horse on a property of less than three acres. The horse is being kept for medical reasons, as attached the correspondence from the applicant on that, it should be the very last thing. Uh, of the, the chapter board. Article twenty-one, section one oh five, item number thirty-five. Requires a conditional use permit for keeping farm animals, including but not limited to horses. Ponies, cows, hogs, pigs, sheep and or goats on a lot attract less than three acres. The applicant has indicated no additional horses or livestock would be staged on the property. And, uh, staff has not received any public comments as of, uh, when I composed this staff report. Uh, comments from other departments, I checked with environmental services, they stated, uh, that both the local environmental code and the state department of agriculture allow the keeping of livestock in reasonable numbers provided. There is no threat or damage to certain elements that would include lab goals or tank, uh, or contamination of well water. Staff is recommending approval, and the only condition that I would really put upon this particular request is the applicant's full building permit when they have the shelter built for the horse. Um, and, uh, the options that you would have is recommend approval with the above referenced condition. Uh, recommend approval with any additional conditions as being necessary, table for further information or denial. So, uh, I believe the applicant is here. And, uh, do you have anything to add to that? Very good. Uh, and, uh, now it's, uh, Mister Chairman, if you would, uh, you can open it up to the public comment for this, this case.
All right. So the public is invited to speak to the board during a public hearing portion of any item under discussion. Please raise your hand after being recognized, give your name and address, and proceed with your questions and comments. Shortly after the applicant presents the case, the funding commission may ask questions of the applicant. The board will discuss those answers. After the board rests, the chair will invite the comments for interested persons for or against or retro. Uh, the board will conduct discussion and take action if possible. Citizens are asked to limit your remarks, please do not repeat comments already made by previous speakers. Due to the timeframe, please limit your remarks to clear and concise statements. The chairman may have to put a limit on the number of speakers. The board will attempt to be fair and flexible and to ensure all those that are interested are heard. All zoning changes, conditional uses, and subdivision proposals will go from this board to the county commissioners, recommendation of approval or denial. All issues heard this evening will go to the county commissioner after the fourteenth day appeal iterated applicable. Should you be interested in attending that meeting, please contact the zoning administration or the county clerk for the scheduled hearing date and time. If you wish to file a protest petition, please contact the zoning administration for the forms needed. The zoning administration will explain the petition process, thank you for coming, input is always appreciated.
And a, a kind of a clarification to the public, uh, when it says items that are presented, the public to comment that's anything that an application has been submitted for, so in this case. The, the, the comment period is over for CUP twenty-four dash zero five. Any comments from the public on this case?
I live at twenty-two, oh, don't, don't. My name is Jean Ferreira. And I live at twenty-two sixty four Fair Road. And I support that they get to plant their three acres of my towers. Okay, I live on twenty acres, so I've got a big backyard. So it should count for a big vote.
Chairman.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
My name is Paul Gaston, and also live next to the residence of your two-two-five four Fair Road. Um, you hadn't mentioned in my own concern, you don't have a problem with the horse. Um, but you did mention that my concern is there is no shelter for the horse, but you did mention.
Yes, she's proposing.
Cause that, that's where I stand.
Yeah. So. So we didn't want to, um. Build a shelter if it got denied and then have all the money.
Yeah, you, yes, that's fine, this, that's my only concern.
Yes, yes.
I personally find the words, they're not bothering you. I'm not, I'm not saying. I'm not saying.
What's, what is the shelter gonna be, is just a lean tube with some?
A lean tube and then a shed for all the tack and all of that. Just more than what I had before, the last owner just had a little bit of trees, so.
Chairman, I have some questions for the other. Sure. Hi, um. Do you own the property?
I'm not a guy.
Yeah. Not a guy of property. Um. I also live on Fair Road. Uh, I drove, I think, by the property, is, is the horse there now? So the her, horse is currently there, how long has it been there?
Yeah, I believe this year.
Of this year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And. How did you come about? What reason did you come to apply for a CUP, how, how did?
We got a letter in the mail, um, stating that, um, it was against zoning.
Okay. Okay.
We didn't know that it was against zoning to have him there, we didn't realize that it was even disguised with my mom bought the property like right before we even.
It's a clarification, she's got two acres. And it's, it's less than three, so. So you received the complaint, you sent a letter. And, and now she, so she's, okay.
Yeah.
I just, I just wanted to say.
I freaked out.
Well, it's against. That's understandable, you didn't know what the rules. But the rules, this is a situation where, you know, we may want to since we're updating this. And when I look at this and see if we can, you know, kind of, some, some possibility in that. Us and workers and see if I can, see what other communities do because if it's one horse on three acres or something like that, I. I, I, I hate to have somebody dispenseable, I think my first opinion, that's just my personal opinion. Do, if this is approved, does the CUP stay with the property? Or does it go with the owner? It stays with the, the, it stays, stays with the property, basically what happens is, let's say, in six months, but he decides that she doesn't want the horse, she sells the horse. And then besides, uh, six months after that, that she wants another horse over there. Uh, after six months, it, it basically that can expire, so she would have to reapply. But as long as our horse is on there continuously. Uh, during the duration of that, of the life of that property. Okay, I'm a little confused, you. The horse is gone and six months later it expires, if the horse always stays there, but she moves, then it stays as a CUP? As long as it, as long as the, the new owner has, you know, meets that window of six months. You do have the option, if you wanted, if you want to say as a condition, say, at any event that that property sells, that you can go ahead, that CUP will expire, you can do that if you want it. Questions or answer?
I'd, well, I personally like that writer, if it would be approved. I'm not a fan of small parcels with horses on them from other places where I've lived, just because it. You just get more and more people with more and more horses, a horse needs to go, and a horse to something, something else. Not saying it would happen, but I see it happen.
Right.
And.
Well, I used to work in Missouri, so.
I was still in eastern Colorado, you know, I'm probably. So, um, my main question to you is, is it even really a discussion or vote for it? Because I see we have something in our pocket that I believe ties our hands in that place. My question to you is.
How is this tying your hands when you're?
Just say that it. Falls under an act that means we have to do this.
It's not a good discrimination.
Correct.
No, I, I don't really, I don't know, that's up to you guys to decide. Uh, if it's, uh, if, you know, you have no issue with, you know, approving it, you know, and just like I say, put that condition on there that. It's out, it's the property sells and it's removed. Uh, and that if she moves to another property against the county, she would have to reply. That's.
Right.
This is, this is the first case you guys have ever seen like this. Mm-hmm. And so there is, there's a little bit of, um. You're gonna have to, you're, you're gonna have to probably parse out how, how to handle that because we aren't, the winter regulations are written out, it's not really clear. Uh, it's the provision I have warranty, it just says on less than two acre, or less than three acres, they have to come before you approve.
I just feel like this.
I don't want you to get that wrong, that is not a discrimination, that is an explanation of something, of how that helps me. That is, um, that has nothing to do with service. Service and emotional are two separate things, okay? People who use service, uh, animals have it as a law. People who use it as emotional cannot take that or have to have that in every area, that can be unapproved and not discriminate against me. Okay, I'm not using that as a twist your arm, I don't want you to get that wrong. That is something, just letting you know that it is something that helps me, it helps people with PTSD, it's helped militaries, it's helped a lot of different people in that way. So I don't want you to take that as a twist your arm, I'm not one of those people that's gonna. Put that on you guys to, to be like that, okay? I'm not, and I don't want you to think that I'm a person like that, all right? I want you to make this decision on the business at hand. I am just putting that in there as a, this is something that helps me and something that I have gone through in my life. That is all that is, okay, I, I want you guys to know to get that.
I think, I think we're clear, thank you.
Cool. I'm just sorry, that made me really nervous.
You're fine, you're fine, okay?
Cool.
I, I, I'd like to, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion, if there's no other exceptions. So, so basically all we have to do is just connect with the current, current owner and the current property, it was, it can be, the parcel, current owner.
More comfortable with that, yes.
Yes. Should we, I, I, I'd like to make, uh.
I have a question, if local neighbors in this part of this, she goes, I imagine.
They're anonymous, complaints are an option.
Are you talking to people to share that property with me or the?
Oh, that's not.
That would just sound like the same, then we've got to just outline in the.
Right behind me, um, there, very much so, I don't know, I don't, I don't think so. The only other place where I could think of was my house, it's across the street, I don't have a clue, I ordered eight acres and somebody that drove by, so I don't want to make.
Well, I just see that, I know that that used to be one whole land, the same person, like, oh, and I just wanna make sure that. The new owners, I don't think they just recently, or just, I'm just making sure that keeps up with them, or you're all in the same compliance, if they're okay with that being abused for that too.
Yeah, and like I said, it could have been somebody that drove by, I don't wanna make assumptions.
Yeah, just making sure they're aware of what you're doing with them.
Oh, for sure, for sure.
Um, I do have another question, I, cause I have driven by and seen the property, um, and I apologize if it's been here, I was. Skittish, but, um, is it just, it's just a. Small twine for that electric fence, right now, is there a plan to have something more sturdy, or is that all you're gonna have for it?
Yes. It's a solar electric fence and I can guarantee you, he will not let you down.
My only question is because of neighbors, and I, I do know the people that live in that property, and they do have children. And that was my only concern.
I am sorry, yeah.
Because it's so close, and I would just, I would have a concern with my children being close to electric fence like that.
Um, so when you, I, I found Jenny wants to come out and touch the fence, it's one of those that it will, it will shock you and it feels like you've been kind of attacked. Um, that was my trick.
Push my trick, share a lucky.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's okay, but this one, it will tap and that is it, and then it will let go, it's not that. Um, it's one of the, it's called level ones, um, and I do understand that. Um, I'm sorry if this has been the one, but a child, when they are told no, don't touch that, should okay. And if they don't, and then they do it, they will learn, not to touch, I think, their bikes. So, so there are no plans in place, not at this time of the year, yes, not at this time.
Motion? I'd like to, uh. Make the motion to approve CUP twenty-four nine zero five. With additions of the CUP stays with the. Owner of the property, number one. Number two, if the current owner and or her horse is off the property for more than thirty days, then the CUP expires. Thirty days. One second. Okay, it has been approved, I seconded for CUP twenty-four dash zero five to approve with. Current plan. To approve with the reference conditions, with additional conditions of if the. Owner of the property sells the property, and if the owner of the property and the horse leave, are gone for thirty days. The horse is gone for thirty days, so our ship's the horse is gone. All pro, uh, all who are verbally threatening. What's inside, CUP passes. Section one.
One.
On, there's no whole business, we'll move to this man is. With the discussion, uh, with our special guest to answer your questions. Some of the commission and other insights regarding experiences during the process of considering allowing electricity in this county.
Okay, this, uh, the, uh, Ms. Ferraris, uh, was scheduled, uh, she was, she was unavailable this evening. And, uh, so, uh, we, you know, the, Diane Gobak is here, uh, to, uh, she's from Marion County, and she'll give. A kind of, uh, second perspective with, uh, what, uh, you were, uh, last month. And, uh, so with that, I can, Diane is available.
So I'll move back to, uh, the, 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 and also to have a, to say that I'm not here to. Maybe there are anything like that, I'm just here to present the upside, we want two sides of paper, so there's two different perspectives. And I did bring documents, now, what I decided to do, and what I decided to approve it, was I do have copy of his names. And so there's some specific questions that were asked, and so while we adjust, like, is that thing? So one of the first things, um. So, one of the first things, um, that we asked, question number one, and that was how long the project was. We presented to you like a nine month, we see that. Presented as a nine month project, and people told that they got it in there, they got it built, they got it up, nine months and they were out. But that's not quite the fact. The fact of the matter is, it turned out to be a two-year project. It was supposed to be a twelve-month project, but it did overrun into like twenty months. So it was not quite nine months period, so it is a lengthy project. And depending on the number of towers, my understanding is they have a lot more towers than what we have. Being ninety-five, I think we forget, I'm not mistaken, I'm not sure. I read several different proposals. So I do have the, the base, the thing that I, a document here, uh, for the page to show, prove that I'm saying it's critical. I have copies for you, okay? Also, then the question was asked, how long the project is, and it is forty-two or forty-three year project in its entirety, okay? Uh, so then another question that we passed was, um, I think Mr. Martin asked this question, is this, what they say they would?
Diana.
Yes.
Could you get a clarification?
No, this is for you, I need a clarification until this is not a question and answer.
Yeah, this is, okay, yeah.
Well, I was wondering if she could speak up louder, ten years ago.
Well, I mean, we can turn her, but she's addressing us moreover.
And what is, what is the project, I miss, I miss what that was.
This is her talking about the project in Marion County.
Yeah.
The wind energy project.
Ah.
This is us here and there.
Okay.
Her, her thoughts on their experience.
Okay.
But this is not, yeah, not a, it will not be a public comment.
No, that's.
Just wanted to make that very clear.
That's why I wanted to know what's going on here.
Okay. Thank you.
So in essence, we don't have an application, so there's no, probably no bearing on it.
Nope.
This is simply information for the commission.
Right.
Period, yeah.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
Not, 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 yeah. So anyway, uh, the next question was about, are they doing everything that they said they would do? Okay, so I do have with me a copy of our road maintenance agreement in its entirety. Um, I also have a copy of our decommissioning agreement that we signed, and it's signed in its entirety. I brought our pilot agreements in their entirety, okay? Um, just so we can read how we devised and contrast that with exactly how the project went along. Um, I will also say that the project did start, uh, in February twenty-eight. We did do the CUP in twenty-seventeen, was going to be approved CUP. But the actual physical work, and they brought in the contractor, which was Red's, R E S, was the contractor that actually done all that, was on about February twenty-eighth. And then on October twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen, they just pulled right out. Even as a permission, even though they were leaving, they were just gone, we got emails, see ya, and that's the way it ended. So, um, and I do have all that documentation here too, to show that for you. Uh, the next question then that I seen that was asked, it says a pilot agreement. That it says you can't get payment if they go down the roads for repair. And they had said to you that the pilot agreement pays off. But the pilot agreement actually stands, pilot stands for payment, you are taxing because you have a ten-year payment. Now, of course, when you get that, you can use it for anything you want, you can want to use it for road repairs. But in your maintenance agreement, you have a separate agreement for road repair of money, which they should pay you separately. It's, should be two separate things. So, um, anyway, we in Marion County, when this contract, when this project came before, we did not have an engineer on staff. We simply had a road, um, director, okay? You have to have an engineer. So, uh, Diamond Vista told us to go hire one, and they would pay. If you're boxing, you can do that, so we did, we put out bids, and we chose to hire Kirk Ham and Michael engineering. The reason we chose them is because their resume was absolutely amazing, and this is their sheet right here. All the wind farms throughout Kansas that they worked for in various counties. They are extremely experienced working with, um, wind farms, processes, laws, and things like that. So we did, uh, go ahead and pilot it. Um, Diamond Vista did not like that, and so that's when our problems began. So, um, and I will tell you, uh, Kirk Ham and Michael, they followed the letter of the law. They would hire to protect us as a county, and that's what they did. If, if the road maintenance team said no, it would not. We did not bend any rules, but that's what the agreements are for, we said no, we didn't want it, so we expected not to get it. Um, so anyway, uh, like I said, I do have a copy of the road maintenance agreement for you. And then I also have a copy, um, of, um, yeah, okay, so I got that for you. And then the other thing is, the next question number two, the same thing, it says, um, I wanted to let you know that I have attached here a letter that our county attorney, well, what's our county attorney? We hired a separate attorney, which was Pat Hughes, he's out in Newton, which, well, I can't call Newton, I think. He chose to experience the goal of wind farms, he's actually a wind farm attorney, I would say, myself, just because he, every county hired him to complete. Uh, but he worked for us, and he sent a letter to the Matt Gilhouser of A L. Express, Gilhouser, see the first sentence of his letter to you. It says, the board of county commissioners in Marion County is very dissatisfied with the failure of the developer of Diamond Vista project. We cheap out with the greater maintenance of the roads in compliance with section one point nine, one point nine one, in the road maintenance and use agreement. We had issues. We have, in our road maintenance agreement, very specific, very, uh, pointed guidelines. And honestly, we have horrible, horrible roads, um, and we could not get the repairs made as was promised in our road maintenance agreement. So that's why the attorney wrote that letter. I also have here a copy of the whole, because people have to establish the whole roads, if they may be on roads, they may not be. Uh, and the simple reason for that is because a lot of those transformers, you've got, you're proposing what, six hundred fifty foot tall towers? Ours are only five hundred. But some of those transformers weigh three hundred, four hundred thousand pounds. Roads simply are not made to handle that type of weight. Especially if you're gonna bring in lots of them, so they have to stay off of them. But anyway, then at the end of the contract and so on, when we, when he tried to get some of this, and when we make up these contracts, and I did give you a copy, only if you better than as you go forward, so you'll know how the contracts are written, and things to watch out, there's certain key words. Our level is force major, which is what we experienced. So when we sent that letter to an L, our response was force major. Force major, we had a rain event that year, and there was a lot of rain. And so they're saying that the roads problems that we experienced were not their problem, it was an act of God, that's what force major means, it was an act of God. But therefore, we disputed it, it's a majority, according to the contract. We bought lots and lots and lots of new things, lots and lots of extra attorney fees, and so on. That's just the kind of the nature of the, of heat there, uh, but I'll just warn you to be aware of that, okay? And then, um, the next question was, I continue my, my subject.
So you said they agreed to pay for, for engineers, did they in fact do that?
Um, yes and no. Uh, and I was gonna get to that, but I wanted to question what happened. So, yes, they did pay for him, okay? But then, when I get to the pilot agreement, I'll show you how they going on that. But anyway, what they did was, at the end of the contract, when you're all sort of done, they reimbursed themselves through our pilot. Our pilot was supposed to be, it isn't, like, two hundred fifty thousand dollars a week. Um, what they did was, they paid us one hundred thousand dollars in the year of twenty twenty, one hundred thousand in twenty twenty-one, and one hundred thousand in the year of twenty twenty-two. Therefore, they just, they took a hundred sixty-nine thousand dollars away from us through the pilot to reimburse themselves. But they can see that we didn't pay them to the end.
So would it be fair to say they paid you the two hundred fifty thousand, but before they wrote the check, they deducted what you billed them for the engineering?
So that, yeah, yes.
So you didn't get the full pilot money?
No, we did not, not for the first three years of contract. Now, this year, uh, uh, we did get the first full payment, and I do have a letter straight in front of our county treasurer showing that this is the first year where we actually received, and I think we received two hundred fifty thousand dollars, which is, which is fantastic. Right, and should be what we received when forward, but, um, I will, then I also.
Thank you.
No problem. So, I'll get into that right now, uh, in that back door. Kirk and Michael, what I love about them, first of all, they worked for us and they were diligent, they're all workers, I recognize them highly. Um, but anyway, when they come in, what they do is, they do a, a tree inspection. Every road that is got, is out on, in your plan, once you get your CUP, you'll have a map, or the literature lines, and the road, and so on. Kirk and Michael goes through every single road, takes pictures of every inch of the road, the culverts, the bridges, underneath, the rounds, the top, the bottom. It's very extensive, it takes two, three weeks for them to do just that. And at the end of the project, they go around the exact same thing, take pictures of the roads, the culverts, the bridges, up underneath, and so on. And this is funny, because we need to be hearing, cause that underneath the bridges, if they keep cracks and things that were here before, that's a low, low weight, and so on. So, this is the copy, uh, their post instruction, uh, their post examination that they did for us. And it does tell you that they compare the, the two pictures, because they compare the tree and the posts together, and that's how they determine. Whether it is smashed, culverts, lack of load, of a rock, water damage, because a lot of times, you know, your building goes up into pastures, and how it changes the direction of the sun wash, that's a part of the problem. But our entry was four hundred seventy-three thousand dollars worth of damage, okay? And that's all that I hear from, and that's actually cheap compared to some counties that I, I wanted to do. So I have your copy then also from mechanic clerk, there, there, yeah, mechanic clerk. That, when we developed the post and did a lot of damages that we had received, of course, we had a battle. So we had meeting after meeting after meeting, uh, with county commissioners and the different people from Diamond Vista, McQuill, and some of the others. Um, and of course, the V N L, also, then about V N L, in fact, we didn't show them, but people, Red, the contractors. And, um, what I feel, we had so many meetings, so all of them were quite heated. Um, but nonetheless, you know, we thought it's been a bunch of fun to do. They defended their position, the force, the, that's a hundred and stay, hundred and stay after God. Um, managers playing down a lot of the line that they caused that damage and so on. Uh, but anyway, the bottom line is, we did get paid two years later. We got our check from them for those damages in September seventeen, the twenty twenty-one. So, um, my point of saying all of that was, within my, the way it's supposed to be, you know, I, I, I was very, myself personally, very frustrated with just all the hassle. And of course, our, our residents, we've definitely been on these roads, uh, as these, um, roads became impassable and different clients and stuff, it was to be a fault, the commissioners. And so we were in kind of a spot where, and of course, we were ob, we were obligated to help do what they, and when you read your road maintenance agreement, you're applying that they have clauses in there that are beautiful. So we get a notice, and a fix in the road, and they will be there in twenty-four hours, and that road will be fixed within forty-eight hours, and probably long, you know? Funny, okay? So anyway, um, now I'm gonna get to the pilot agreement. As I came earlier, that we actually, the project, we signed our contract, we need to contract the road maintenance and decommissioning, we signed February twenty-eight, twenty eighteen. They had the decommissioning, road maintenance, all that. Our pilot agreement was not, our very first pilot agreement was given to us at the draft in two thousand seventeen, which is shortly after we signed the CUP, okay? And it's wonderful, signing is a great pilot agreement, but if you pay for, and I will do page four, you can't see it from there, but this, this is nothing, this is a contract, okay? Uh, that is not signed, and we couldn't get, and the sign, that's one thing. They were signed, they were signed, they were signed, and months and months passed, again, our attorney, letters, that would. We visit U P, the CUP, we visit decommissioning, we did all that stuff, why did we not have a signed pilot agreement? Well, the answer to that is, because we want happy. So, we did get a signed agreement in July, uh, two thousand eighteen, okay? Which is like six, seven months later, uh, from all the others, long shots, five, six months later. And again, if you refer to page four, you will notice that page four looks a little different than this page four. And I ca, I compared both of these contracts, otherwise it's word for word, it's at page four. The insertion on this page four that we signed in July is the one where it says that the professional service fees provided however, that any such reduction shall be authorized only to the event such professional service fees collectively receive two hundred fifty thousand dollars. This middle of the project, here we are, six, seven months, and then they're telling us they're only gonna pay two hundred fifty thousand. That was never expressed jobs from the beginning, we hired an, an engineer, gotta have it, we pay it. Okay, so that's, uh, uh, that's how that happened, and that we did sign.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Was the project in the, I got CUP signed, you didn't get the pilot agreement signed, but the project was being built during that time?
Yes. Started on February twenty-eighth, we got the pilot from Y, we got CUP.
And the pilot was different than what you had been presented during the CUP approval?
Yes. Yes, and that, like I said, was the one, the very first one that we were presenting, but I not mention any information on professional.
May I ask a, a question? Why did you sign it, why did you not move back and get the original?
That is excellent question, and I can tell you why we signed it, because we had our attorney, Pat Hughes, that we brought in all our county attorneys, but Pat Hughes paying in, and he was negotiating back and forth, side call, couldn't get answers, emails, letters, blah, blah, blah. Finally, he said, hey, I'm not gonna pay this, otherwise you're gonna spend more money than we need to pay.
Take the.
Because the pilot is basically voluntary, they don't even have to give you any. So, there were, that was on the advice of our attorney, um, we go.
So, I just want to back up just a minute, so there's about four hundred fifty thousand in additional road damage, they didn't want to cover, negotiated for two years, and then they finally paid.
Yes.
Did they ever go back and pick up the additional money that they said they would pay you for the engineering firm? They said, oh, go hire, we'll pay for it, but then they took it out of the pilot money, did they ever go back and make the hold on that?
Okay, so the way that works is, when they said to do that, um, when the engineer would bill us, we would naturally bill the, the, the wind company, and they would pay us. So every month, we were getting checks for the engineering. That was not, as the project was going, the checks kept coming, but when the project stopped, now they told us what they pay, that, that's the big thing. By the contract, by the pilot, we're not paying them two hundred fifty thousand. And that's when you took it out of pilot.
And they never did go back and make the hold?
No, no.
I have a question.
Sure.
On your, on your, uh, engineer you hired, so they went out prior to, and then they went out post and, and took all the pictures?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm assuming, you established all routes?
Yes.
Okay, and so who, please stack, it says they did go on this road that wasn't paid all route?
Kirk and Michael, one wind firm, they had a mare or two on staff, twenty percent. Because you had, somebody moved your parts into this project. Uh, you have all kinds of people that they contracted, bringing in supply, uh, bringing in just, running, 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 all kinds of stuff, like the walk, like the, the raids, or whatever it was, uh, preparing the roads, uh, and see that they had all kinds of equipment. Raiders and stuff to go make the roads to there, and then all that cement, those, you're seeing those foundations that they put on there, those are massive. All that cement and all that stuff, and I mean, so one of the things, too, you have to remember when you have your road maintenance agreement, not only the weight you have to worry about, but we had sixty-seven need trucks, like the vehicle pickups, the pickups, moving pickups, and that, black trucks, on our country roads every single day. Pure volume of those roads, hard downshift, I don't even guess, until I saw it, it's like.
Any of your parents already designated our whole roads? Or were they all? Main, blacktop, and then to the rap, which is short.
Or, um, they could be low, they could be down. For those, they could be low, that's how they had to get to their curvines.
Sure.
So yeah, yeah. And I would tell you, they did violate the, which is understandable, I'm not criticizing that because again, that was part of contract and plot in. So it's hard to control all that, you know, the, the, this term, you know, maybe two miles short, and if you go this way. So yeah, and there was a stiff penalty, five thousand dollars. You come off of that hauler, you pay five thousand. If I'm not mistaken, we did collect that twice. I'm not just gonna, Captain Michael, I know we did collect it twice.
So with all of that traffic that starts to really incidents, like with a pedestrian driving down.
Not that I'm aware of, you know. The biggest thing that we had was dust, dust, yeah, we had that traffic on the gravelly roads and stuff. Animals, horses, people, coming out of houses that were breaking through the road, that, that, which is covered in dust. Yeah, so they put down the water and stuff and the truck. But in the middle of July and stuff like that, that's a difficult problem with all that traffic. You know, and you have inspectors, you have, I mean, the list of people authorized on the roads every day is sixty-seven trucks. Then they go to watch and we come back and watch all this other stuff, I mean, it is a, it's a big problem. So let me see, I wanna think. Yeah. So, okay, so now this is the core of the question that I couldn't show you how much money we actually received from the pilot and what we bought, paid, what we did for work and stuff like that. So I will also advise you of one other thing, of de-commissioning is a big subject. Although, in my opinion, you don't worry about de-commissioning for in forty-five years, are we gonna be here? And I had some very good personal attorneys that I've had forever, and they'd always tell me, you have to understand contracts are made people. Now we all know, you know, if I go back right now thirty years from something, my dad built up as a contract and paid for my work and all of the forces he put on now dying, you're gonna do that today. So you have to really, really articulate in making up your de-commissioning contract. Ours is, ours is woefully weak. As a matter of fact, I had some calculations in it. And yeah, when you say you got two million dollars in the de-commission, you got ninety-five towers up there. What is that? That's something like a hundred thirty thousand dollars per tower. Yeah, the estimate today to take down a tower is roughly a half a million dollars. So, and did it, you follow me, if you listen to that? My personal opinion is, I think it should be written in a way, the whole moment's policy is there. At, you know, whatever cost in at that time, replacing costs, that gives you flexibility. But it's just something that.
That de-commissioning is taking it down or by far not. Like reverse engineering?
I would say, I would think that is spelled out as well. But everything will have to go, because that's key corners.
It is, from my understanding, it isn't spelled out in Marion County? It's not spelled out as by de-commissioning? That would be something that I think we would be, want to be very specific.
And you wanna be extremely careful on the verdict. Couple other things that we got hit on is in South Carolina, like they're concerned that they will pay, they will pay whatever reasonable cost you, blah, blah, blah. That was reasonable to kill you. My definition is reasonable and theirs is two different definitions. So, and there's lots of little words like that, which you can take for granted. Sounds reasonable, they contract like that. But really hard way. So anyway, I wanted to recommend that to, to just be able to be careful on that. And then the second thing I want to say, they would push for all these that they had in like the two million dollars for the de-commissioning and different things like that. Letter of credit, letter of credit, letter of credit. Me, that's a mistake. This is our copy. This is the copy of our letter of credit from the mission type. This letter of credit, because people are gonna try to access this letter of credit when they do not pay like four hundred seventy-three thousand dollars. You can't touch this, my other say, authorize it. Well, they're not gonna authorize it, they don't have it paid. This thing alerts a bond or cash. So this thing didn't do us anything. But we have one. Okay? So let's see. That's about all documents that I brought with me, this is things that I just wanted to know. I will also add just my own personal thing. It, it's kind of a, a double layer sword because you have people on wind turbines, wind farms, they love them or they hate them. You're gonna check and love them. And I don't think it's like the old, they really, and some people, you know, money. But the hate and division, like in Marion County, this is a, along neighbor against neighbor, families are broken, it's thick. It is bad. Just because basically of the, it was, wind turbines are noisy. I know because I will speak, my husband, I've only been married for eight years, so they have their contract all signed before we got married. And I will also tell you, I had to sign a waiver that I had no interest and I get no benefit from the wind turbines. They did not do any business with me. They get it with the, with the farm, okay? So that family has that, I have nothing to do with that. My husband knows where I stand, and we don't discuss it. The next thing I do not, but I will tell you, I would really, really, really wish if you'd come down and look at the wind turbines. Like David says, for your project now that they haven't fired up for you. And I can take you to the line of the property. And I can show you these wind turbines and up underneath, they're just black alliances, spades and that oil is shining and clear, so it's coming down the tube like this. That's four years. What kind of isolation is that gonna be in another year? Get alone, four, eight, ten, twenty, forty. All right, we'll offer a chance to this. This is something I had a lens with, we had a year, but in all kinds of things, that used to work down spirit, the union. And we put a whole paper in, and I can get that for you, but I'm not thinking on that. Those blades are filled with particulates, cancer causing particulates. You're reverse engineering, they can't cut them, they can't do any of that stuff, they have to come down whole. And if they do have to do any type of repair, they have to go into a special building, a special place to use the assets. Because you want to be very cautious on, and I would, I would strongly recommend that you have to do the homework on that. Because that is very serious, and you can't forget a lot of information on that. One other thing I would tell you, I have a commission friend up in Lincoln County. And Lincoln also has, and they had them for you, I think I'm fifteen, fifteen years now. And they already went through their ten years. And so they had renegotiate, but in their contract, they had to where it would be the wind company, it would be Zinell's responsibility to dispose of any replaced parts. Okay? Oh, yeah, that's how we got our contracts. So what happened was, when they had to replace a blade, the whatever reason they come in, they replace it, they went to that farmer, the one, the hitch over here, you might have put this, this, lady didn't learn, tell him, tell her, oh, he'll pay you so much money. And the farmer said, sure, they had blades laying at different places. So when they read on their contract, they knew they had a right that differently. Can't just say that it's your, it's your responsibility to dispose of it properly. Because in their view, that was proper, they got rid of them, you know, farmers have all kinds of stuff in the ditches everywhere, so. But I, I, I say, I trust them, I say that's funny, it's not funny at all, but it's just another example. I really feel your intention. So I do have copies of these documents, if you're interested in them, I'll be happy to leave them for you. I'm sorry, I only made three copies. Wild, my turn at home about life.
No matter, no liquor, we'll, we'll, we'll be, another one.
Sure, and, and this is all.
But they were pretending here. Tim has a copy.
Yeah.
Could you, could you, you have, do you have those on PDFs?
I don't have all of these on PDFs, no. I, you know, I have a condition, these are hand, you know, I need them by hand. So I have like the standard. I'm pretty certain.
I think it would be better to take everything she has and put it in, asking for a PDF, it may not possibly get passed through.
Glory to him. I think when the record was.
Yeah, there was the, the, the attorney agreement.
Okay, yes, I have the, yeah. Thank you, that's it. Okay. I will get them to Tim, I see.
Yes, that's me.
Hey, well, I thank you for your time, I hope I enlightened you. Your life.
Thank you.
Can I ask you another question? So have you mentioned the documents where they tried to label? Along on the maintenance and using words like reasonable? Are those documents, are those in what you have?
Yes.
So, so Tim.
Yeah, that, that's all is contained, the road maintenance, maintenance, the reading written, that's all in there. And you'll see the words, I have a different little one, I will need to use there, and things like that.
You, you have a dress tiring.
You, all that stuff, you wanna get, get in all of that. You wanna be specific that we will pay for any broken, whatever, whatever.
Do you have any penalty for a project that had overruns in time? There's, it's supposed to be a four-month project, it was twenty months, you said. Was there a monthly or weekly or day penalty because you ran long? Could have been or should have been. You, you, you weren't paid the pilot until a couple of years later, is what I'm hearing.
Well, okay, so they're always running behind. So five, ten years, and you tell me. So we got our first pilot in twenty twenty. And then it goes on to January, okay? And it's always paid by the December or January.
But page four was different.
Yes.
And I guess, I guess, I should just let payment aside. It took two years before you got that pilot signed?
No.
No?
It took two years to get the money for the road maintenance damage.
Okay.
It took six months from February to July.
For the pilot?
For the pilot, yes.
Would there have been a way that you could have held the project up until that pilot was signed?
Yes, there was. As, as you, well, as county commissioners, I don't know about, but with county commissioners, we could have, we could revoke that TVA, drop of a hatch.
And, but you didn't.
No, we didn't.
Okay.
Now, I say we, I wouldn't.
Right.
I'd be like, why say?
Understand.
We are we.
I'm just trying to learn a different way. I don't wanna say that you made mistakes because that wasn't the appropriate, but, but I'm trying to learn a better way.
We made mistakes, we should work.
So again, it was four years until you received a full pilot. Four years because they didn't.
Yes, it was one year.
You didn't actually receive the full payment. And how does that pilot payment turn?
Actually, you know what, the wind company does a lot of that because at home, and again, this is something that I have, I, I feel like I've done my homework, I do a lot of homework. I did call Ford County, Dean County, County law office and stuff, I use the references and stuff like that, including Michael, we wanted to tie Wind House. And I got copies of their party, so you know those people out there about eight hundred thousand dollars a year, six hundred thousand dollars a year. This is, you know, years and years ago, by and jump. So I'm like, yeah, cool. But, but it came to us, this is what they offered us. And since they did voluntary, you don't have much of a choice. See, the beauty is, actually, the downfall is, we did ask, but then we did that right. Because the next cry that you're gonna hear is, man, we should have had this started, we were running already a week behind and stuff, and you know how we got these contractors, we contracted, we're paying money, we, you know, this is causing, we got a good deal, so I mean, gotta hurry up, get this done right now. And I used to always say, you know, if this is a good deal today, it's gonna be a good deal tomorrow, it's gonna be a good deal six months down the road. How you wanna hear my answer? So I mean, you're really pushed into the middle of, you know. The very, you know, windmills, wind farms are all over the country. These people are exceedingly knowledgeable and smart. My opinion, if you walk into a room with commissioners, ten minutes, they've got you sized up. This is a piece of paper, and you're gonna crack. Maybe when they walk in, we're nauseous. That's my opinion.
I got a question. When you talked about, you said that you talked to the folks in Lincoln County, et cetera, out there, and they were getting six or eight hundred thousand. And when it comes to you, again, it's voluntary, I, I, I heard that. So did they do a better job of negotiating that?
Yes, they didn't, they didn't, they didn't care. They would say, no, no, you need us. Now, they had some exquisitely knowledgeable, strong negotiators that they wanted to do the negotiations, yes. See, a lot of times you understand, you know, that the, everybody, every, money's tough today. And even county, like tax numbers and stuff, you have to make them stretch. So when you're negotiating money, they really feel like, we're gonna do a favor. They do, actually, there is another gentleman, you really should hear from, I can't remember who, but he has all in loud, he has all power. Where actually the pilot agreements, even though you're getting a chunk of money, twenty-five thousand, forty thousand, whatever it is, that's a fraction, I think. Just going past a commercial, like yours being industrial.
Yeah, I said last time, it was, you know, what's the estimate of the tax would be?
The other one, that.
There was never a study, dividing what those assets are, what the cash flow is, and then you just simply apply the basic tax, ten percent, whatever tax of that naturally should be given.
Right, and you know, I would tell you, and just like David, I didn't know, back then, I didn't know, and you know, he did not do a study. But out West, he did. And so I only learned that myself. And I talked to the gentleman once, I learned that, so, oh my God, do you have, how much, what is this and stuff like that? And he said, oh, sure I will, you know, of course, I can follow up, like, yeah, I can, I will follow you. But yes, ladies and gentlemen, and I do have his name and number, I didn't bring it with me. I see that type of stuff, I mean, it's not new. But it's another piece of information. Yes, I sure will.
I think I come up with that in the house. Any type of business or community should understand that.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Just to kind of follow up with what we talked about last month, I think.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Art to the ten-year tax abatement of all wind energy facilities approved prior to January first of two thousand seventeen, have a right to sign tax exemption. Those facilities approved after January first of two thousand seventeen are under the tenure of abatement. So currently, there are no Kansas wind farm facilities in use where the tax abatement is expired. The other item was that the only, the only de-commissioning, or de-commissioned wind farms that was being defined based on research, Australia or Europe, I can't find any de-commissioned wind farms that have actually been de-commissioned. Even more compared, I'm still looking, but I said, I, I, my guess is, most of what I can find. Maybe instead of looking for a whole farm, go, go, one tower? I could, I could do that, but usually those aren't really for the, that's not basically the answer, so I'll, I'll go and see if I can. Tower? Yeah. Another item is, uh, the staff is acquiring more information, I know you were asking, you know, county and all this work, and Lincoln, I reached out to Lincoln, they're gonna send. Uh, and also, I'm looking at, saying, this county was well said, with how these are. I'm gonna find out the reasoning behind that, so I'm. I was gonna go over just anybody, the other thing I have is just going over, you do copies of I laws. Under section seven, that's part eight communication, basically explains that. So basically, uh, those planning commissioners are appointed and have elected staff allowed to give the personal contact information to any commissioner publicly. Furthermore, any discussion with an individual commissioner on any pending project or application prior to the official public hearing may be construed as an attempt to have undue influence on the commissioners' whole. And this is based on what state statutes they're basically iterating to us on planning commissioners. Commissioners must disclose at regular meetings when that application is being considered, if they were approached by an individual in conversation about any, you know, future project. If that includes receiving any, like, correspondence or whatever. And usually, the way I handle the correspondence aspect of it is if you receive a letter or something addressing you regarding a case, submit it to me and I'll, I'll submit that again on the internet record. Public records, once that hearing is established.
As I said in my response to you, Jim, I, I've been, I've been conversations, people have asked me questions. And that's inevitable, you're gonna, you're gonna run into people, I would, you know, there's friends, there's neighbors. Dickinson County is a rural county, you know a lot of people, um, you know, I, I've been asked, what do you think? And, and I'll, I'll be honest with the whole group, my answer is, I don't know. Uh, uh, so, you know, my, my goal is economic development for our agricultural based county. That's my goal. Uh, I, I've been in economic development, I moved to Dickinson County ten years ago. I will continue that, but I also appreciate that I've been a fifth year junior major farm here. That's my answer. I don't have enough information to base any decision. I mean, I think, I think this, uh, what was her name? Diane. Probably, for me, raised, maybe you realize there's more questions that need a lot of answers.
So what does that process look like, Ken, for getting more answers? What does the time horizon look like? Uh, we're, we're trying to shoot for a, if we can get everything that we need, we're still negotiating with and out on certain, uh, meetings with, like, fire chiefs and stuff like that, and different teams. Before we actually, and there's some corrections that they got from the agency documentation that they sent us, we've been reviewing some details. He does not have complete application that we received, so. Once we did that, the application, and we made corrections and done everything that they're supposed to do. One of the things that we're trying to get them to do is produce a roadmap for us, yeah, the whole roadmap. And, uh, and, uh, and so that's, that's gonna be a big factor as well, so. Right now, if he gives everything that comes to us. Uh, we can try to, uh, do a public hearing on either, uh, September or October. Uh, it's just, yeah, that's how we're looking at it. Not either regularly, regularly scheduled, uh, or Thursday, probably would be, as far as I was gonna tell these guys, gonna ask you guys in the next week or so, uh, if I can get some, you know, scheduled, and, you know, be available. Uh, obviously not on weekends, not gonna do that. But it's, it's, it's something on, like, uh, Monday through Friday, uh, during, uh, September, almost September, or October. Just kind of, schedules, just so I can get an idea as to if we have a form or if we have, or not. So, yeah, this is what I was asking, and from, from the good information you had a month ago, and the good information tonight, and each one of those informational meetings seems to just have a lot more that needs to be figured out. Um, I, I may be the only one, but I, I would like to see a two or three year, maybe five year, whatever, moratorium on this, just on wind energy, just like we did solar, till we get a chance to get on top of it. And I would, if I'm open to it, I would even make that motion. But maybe I'm the only one.
I, I feel the same way. The other thing, we're talking about the application. Martin brought up the fact that this opens up a whole bunch more questions that he needs to answer. And so my point is, the commission, for us, the county commissioners, are asking this board for a recommendation. Our recommendation should be based on all of our questions being answered and information we have. And I don't feel like, this is my opinion, I don't feel like I should be pushed in to, maybe that's a long perception. I don't feel like I should be pushed in to voting on a decision, so we meet the application.
Yeah, we don't have a complete application, and I, I don't, I don't feel obligated to, to do anything for them. As we've talked before, I'm, you know, I'm really interested in Dickinson County, not really in New York. Power generated goes to other states, and they don't pay their, uh, they don't pay their, not a portion of it, but, uh, their pilot, they don't pay their pilot agreement, they use created legal language to try to circumvent, uh, you know, the local government. I, I'm not feeling like being in a hurry for their convenience. I would rather make it our convenience. So with that, I guess I would make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we do a five year moratorium on wind energy in Dickinson County.
Are we there? I have a question.
We would make a motion.
It's not, it's not under any challenge.
It's not under that.
How do we do that? How do we, how do we, how do we address this prior to them doing the application? Because then it will be, well, the application, we can't change it again. How do we do this?
Yeah, we just.
You can, you are considering this, uh, he, I guess, you, you. West, were you requesting, uh, you know, I said, I can put that on as a.
Excuse, excuse me?
Okay, I need to get legal clarification.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'd like to make a motion to make, uh, adjustments in campaign board.
If they can't change the agenda.
General.
I do, I do have a clarification. You're talking about a, a public hearing that will not be on the third Thursday, is what you're looking at in the future.
Tonight's rock over.
Right. It's simply a public hearing. We will then come back after a public hearing, soon our third Thursday.
It's a, if this is a public hearing to consider, when that application gets accepted?
Right.
This is going to be, and the meeting for them to have, because of timing in terms of, of state statutory requirements, depending on when that application is accepted. We, and when we can get a venue, we might not be able to get the venue.
I'm not worried about a venue, okay? But I was just saying, I'm trying to ask, so then this board will be voting at a public hearing?
At a public hearing, you can make a recommendation, one or the other, within that public hearing. Prior to the application.
So the application will be.
The question is, the public hearing, the public hearing where the public's comment will be covered, will be, will be when we receive that application. Once we receive a completed application, scheduled, there might always be one, every case.
This is a round, this is a discussion. So the CUP twenty four national five, we have a public hearing.
Right.
So it would be no different than denied?
No different.
Right, other than maybe a different location?
Right.
And a different time, other than breakfast or Thursday?
Right.
Okay, that, that was getting confusing for me, as far as if it was eleven beyond, before our regular meetings were happening. So we had to replace, uh, it's in place of our third Thursday.
Third, yeah, because it's such a, it's a large project, and what we don't want to flog up our regularly third Thursday schedule, that have, like, places like, or nine, we don't want those getting, you know, people having three or four months down the road or whatever. So how did we, Jim, how did we do the moratorium on solar? If there was not an active application for us to have a public hearing? We did a moratorium on solar, just after the discussion, we chose to do that. So how is this, because there was no pending, no pending application? And that's why I think that's a good.
Yes, we're not.
I don't, I don't.
Yeah, and it's also, wind, wind is in the zoning regulation, wind is in the zoning regulation. Solar, now, and so when you said you want the moratorium on the solar, it's because it's not included. You can only put a moratorium on something that is not in your regulations. Wind is already in our, in our regulations. So, so prior to receiving the application, conclusion, or at our next meeting, review and make any adjustments to our rules and regulations for wind that we approve.
I guess, I think, but the big thing is, Dennis might also be trying to, but I appreciate them.
I understand. We don't wanna be rushed, just because you guys, and the county goes, didn't know that is applying. We wanna go by our timeline, is that correct? I'm just trying to.
That's correct.
Be, because being told, well, got a tell no, and it's negative, that shouldn't be a problem, I don't think. I don't know, maybe if it might be.
Again, this is.
Shouldn't be a problem, they're applying. They should go by our standard.
Well, the thing is, though, is as long as we can get it verified by council, that we, that we can do this.
After it is addressed in our regulations, if solar is not. Okay, we got that clear. Uh, is there a statute, I think I heard you say there's a statute. Is there a timeline after we receive the application, that it has to be either approved or denied?
Yeah, you have to hear it.
Yeah, and we may also state one question.
Once the application is, once it is accepted, it's not been accepted.
So accepted means you have received it?
Received it and reviewed it. There's a lot of documents that have to happen.
So, so why they.
But they have to. We have, once we accept it, then we are on a, we're on a time, right? We gotta give a public transcript.
But you're saying the accept is after you've been, in nature, as.
Right.
So that could be.
That could be six months.
Correct. Just my only request is that, um, we don't feel pressure from the counties, that, that we be set as a part of the, over and out in this entire process.
So if we don't re-review our wind rules and regulations, with a fine toothed comb, their attorneys will, and their attorneys will come to the meeting, and they will say, your rules are ready to say this, and this, and this. You must approve this. I've been down this path before in other legal ventures. Their attorney will read our rules and regulations, and they'll feed those back to us, and, and we will not have the ability to say no. So what I'm asking is, at our next meeting, if the zoning board goes through our rules and regulations with a fine toothed comb, and make any adjustments that we think is appropriate, just as they're going through their documents right now, and, and their application won't have been received by then, then they can make any other adjustments, and then we can go from there.
Right.
So if we don't make any adjustments, there's a lot of things that I am talking about, is going to force that.
There's, there's a difference between accepted and approved. I mean, accepted and received. We receive an application, we can receive an application when it's not been accepted. You know, but we haven't really received an application.
But.
But we're receiving, we're receiving information that's tied to that application.
So once they receive it, though, we would, that's what, I, you guys are checking, they go, I would receive it. We need to make sure we are still, like, making this while that's being.
Right.
So do you, is there anything to keep us from, on our August meeting, as the zoning board, there anything to keep us from reviewing our current wind energy rules and regulations? And making any adjustments that we feel is appropriate, since we don't have an application on it?
You can. I think, I, I think you, in, 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 my gut is that you can, make some minor adjustments here. That's, like I said, that's good. Let me get back with you on your comments, and then hopefully get back with you.
August is coming. Yeah, and that's my point, is that, I think the board deserves the answer that we don't come expecting one thing. Guys, um, can't do that.
You use three words, accept, receive, and review.
Reception.
Receive.
Receive, review, accept. So when does the thirty day statute go into effect?
Well, once we, once, once it is, once we could say, when I told them, now, this is a complete application, there's something we want you to do related to that application, it's outlined in those regulations that you guys approved a few years ago. And, uh, it's be a standard. Then, uh, then at that point, we can start looking at the event due, because that's gonna take the town, and I'm already told a no, and it's.
Thirty days, kind of say thirty days.
You know, that, that takes into account, you know, because the public's gotta, gotta hear, gotta have a facility to actually accommodate everybody. A lot has changed in the years since we wrote those regulations, a lot has changed. Again, I just think it really includes us in August, because it's unbelievable to go through those, it's a blackened time. We need a special work session to go through those.
So, so again, receive, review, and accept. When does the thirty days go into thirty days?
After it's been accepted, and at that point, I tell them, say, no, it's out, if everyone's in that thousand people, wherever it doesn't make it.
Okay, so receive, review, and accept.
Accept.
Are we part of the review? Is that all you? It's all us. Because you're trusting me.
And I, you're, you're reviewing what you guys approved upon those regulations.
You trust you, Sam, you don't trust.
Right, and I know when I first, when I first got on, he had, uh, over them.
Yes.
It has been a few years. Um, but I think, just like we got, it's all these questions, and you want to know, we need to make sure, ourselves at least, have a discussion about it, and that needs to be done globally, most likely.
Right, so can, can we put that on in general for the next meeting?
Yeah, that's a weird question.
Okay.
Yeah, Jim's gonna give that one.
Yeah, and if we wanna put it on for August in general, then I guess, and then September, I think. But it's, it's August, because tomorrow is deadline, when I believe, well, I can, I can put it, eagle out next week, next week. Hopefully, I can, I can get something, a huge, here's something, yeah, I just heard for August, I mean, it's, I mean, they're bad on schools, and I, it's, it's.
It's gonna be better.
Can I ask one other question? Who is Chris, that's, 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 yeah. He addressed all the board, I think. He didn't identify himself. What's your, what's your, and rank and serial number that you can't run that everybody?
So I, uh, I, I'm with Pipelines Resources, where you are.
I have no, sorry.
Sorry, um, I'm with Pipelines Resources. Sorry, um, I'm with High Plains Resources, uh, I deal with, um, and you have regulations and things of that nature. We were, uh, hoping to do the.
Testing.
Testing activity that Tim mentioned at the beginning.
I see. We have any rules and regs for our hydrogen, hydrogen, that's what I was talking, the, the moratoriums for solar and hydrogen, other than things that we can address. Thank you, Chris.
I have one question on hydrogen testing. Is the testing done, done on the light weight?
Yeah, entirely on.
So, the landowners, they don't need my permission to test on the light?
Uh, we do, we need to vote the county's permission.
You're losing me, because if you're not, if you're not on my property, why do you need my permission?
Uh, you do own, you have property under the right, uh, the county, a long time ago.
No, you don't pay, you don't pay, you can check there, they'll say, like, eighty acres, and taxes on, like, depending on whether they're light weight, seventy-six point two acres, because you don't pay taxes on the light. You don't make taxes on the ground that you.
It's the footage that they're using, sure, you just work and you get over all this, to buy some property, that's what is a protection, so that you see, property is consented. Ride of weight limits, and very parts of it, very stretches, so, it's always, legally, it's always good to get consent from the property.
It's better than that.
Right.
I just kind of grew some life.
That's all I have.
That said, I just, I'm ready to adjourn.
Did you adjourn again, second? Second adjournment meeting, in favor of the.
But Nancy just left, uh, I accept. God, you just left. They all were cracked.
It's not me.
Sorry, crack hard. Oh, I got the.
No.